Good afternoon. I hereby call this special meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of board members is present. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Today, members of the board are meeting at a central location and we do have a quorum in attendance. We are meeting by the use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during public comment will have that opportunity. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties that ask for your patience. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. We did not receive any requests to address the board as outlined in the meeting notice for public comment. That will move us into our executive closed session. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:05 PM. We would not anticipate returning to open session before, what, 6:00?
6:00.
Yeah, before 6:00 o'clock. Thank you.
I'm frozen.
The board is now reconvening in the open session. It is 6:20 PM. The next item on our agenda is a budget workshop. Ms. Barbara, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, President Fitch, board members, Dr. Treheal. So I'd like to present to you a projected budget for next year. Again, we're still tweaking, but we're getting very close and changes should not be significant. You have some handouts at your seat that I'm going to go through and I'm also sharing them on my screen. Oh, it's disabled.
Need you, Kirsten, instead of opening it up?
Okay, yeah, give it a try now and see.
It's working now, thank you. All right, so you should be able to see a spreadsheet for the general fund. And the first page that we're looking at here is our revenues. And the first column is our current budget. The second column is what we adopted at the beginning of 2021. And the third column is the 2122 projected budget. So the first thing I would like to look at is our total local revenues, which is primarily our taxes. We're looking at an increase of about one, little over $1 million. And our state funding. Here, we're seeing a significant decrease and that is due to our drop in enrollment that we're projecting. And that's looking like about a 3.2, almost $3.3 million decrease. So it's very important that we get our numbers back up. And then finally, our federal revenues, we're looking at an increase of just under $300,000. The biggest increase we're seeing there is in our indirect cost of $500,000. And the reason that is so large is because we are allowed to take indirect cost on the ESAR funds we are going to be receiving. And so we want to take advantage of that to balance our budget. So we have total revenues of $57,915,584. Moving on to our expenditures. We have them broken down by our functions, which is how you adopt them. And we are seeing significant decreases across almost every function. And part of comparing this to prior years is we just had a very unusual year. And we bought a lot of equipment, a lot of computers. And so you'll see the biggest decrease right here is in instruction. And that is because of just so much was spent this past year getting our computers and our infrastructure in place. But also with our ESAR funds, we are shifting many of our instructional expenses to ESAR. So although we see this huge decline here, much of that will be taken, will be picked back up in our ESAR funds. And then down at the bottom, we are projecting, we started the year with 34 million in fund balance. We're projecting that we will drop down to 31 million. So of course, that's where we start for next year and we are proposing a balanced budget there. Any questions on our general fund?
Lisa, so the board would be able to see total number of ESAR funds that we qualified for? And what is the percentage that the state is requiring us to expand from the ESAR funds in the instruction area?
So we are slated to receive $24 million to be spent over the next two years. 20% of that must be spent on instruction, a minimum of 20%. So that is 4.8 million at a minimum that we have to pick up used for the instruction.
Thank you.
If no other questions, I'll move on to our nutrition budget. So next year, we are, we are going to operate our nutrition, our student feeding program through the summer feeding program. It is a higher reimbursement rate and they are allowing us to do that this year. So although I'm presenting this to you through the nutrition budget, which is Fund 240, which I know that probably means nothing to you, but it will be operated through a different fund. So, but we still need to keep track of it and for you to see how we're doing in our nutrition budget. So we're projecting 5.2 million in revenues and projecting a balanced budget with expenditures at $5.2 million. Any questions on the nutrition budget? All right, I'll move on to the debt service budget. We are, we have no change to our tax rate. It will remain at 24 and a half cents, same as this year. We're projecting income of $5.3 million. And our debt expenditures are going to be $6.9 million for a deficit in our spending of 1.5 million, which is what we want, because you can't spend this money on anything but debt service. And there is no reason to carry a large fund balance. And that is, this large fund balance is also what is allowing us to keep our tax rate lower. So we're projected to start the year at 5.3 million fund balance and end it at $3.8 million. Any questions on the debt service?
I appreciate that, that we're able to go even with the bond and other of you without raising that tax. Wonderful.
All right. The next thing I want to share with you is last budget workshop, you were questioning how our salary schedule was working. And I prepared this spreadsheet here that you can see on the screen. And what this does is here, this first column, that is our teacher steps. So here is our teacher count on each step. So we have six, currently we have 64 teachers that are brand-new teachers this year and they're on step one. And that's how it goes. And as you can see, the majority of our teachers are at the, are more the newbies. Here is the compensation package for the 2021 school year. And this is the projected compensation package for the 2122 school year. So although this says step one, what I'm showing, what I'm showing you is this will, excuse me, this, okay. Is that right? No, this is step one. So we're in, our starting salaries are going up $1,250.
I mean, I hate to ask a question right here, but I thought we were talking about 43.5. Did that change, obviously?
No, that must be a typo. That is a typo because it was 43.5. Oh, not 430. Now everything's going crazy. All right. So what you're seeing here is everyone will see at least a 2% minimum increase in their salaries. At the very beginning here, it's just a little over 2% because we're trying to get our beginning salaries up. And then down here at the bottom, we're seeing an increase. You know what? That was right. That was right. Let me go back. Let me explain myself again here.
Okay.
This is actually step two. What I'm showing is the teacher is at, this year they're at 42.5, next year they'll be at step two at 43.750. Yeah, sorry about that. So they're seeing that they'll get an increase of 1,250 and it's a 2.9% increase. Then down here at the bottom of the salary schedule, we're seeing 3%, 2%, 2%. And it's, this is again me tweaking every year. I'm telling you, I'm tweaking, trying to make the steps a little more even. And that's what that's doing. So what this equates to right here, this 80,000, is that will be the cost for 64 teachers to get this raise. This is their salaries only. That does not include the benefits associated with it. So we're seeing here down at the bottom of the budget of $517,366. So what I thought I would do here is this column, when I was brought up that if we, if we made the every step increase the same amount, so at 1.9%, which is currently the highest increase between any of our steps. If we did that across the board, then this is what our salary schedule would look like. And at that rate, times 64 teachers is an increase of this much to the budget. So if you go on down to the bottom, we would see that we would have an increase to our budget of $2.3 million.
This is what we've got to do strategically.
Here is if we use just an average evening, that's what I'm calling evening, between every step of 1.2%. Then what you see happening here on this column is some teachers would lose money and we don't want that either. So it's one way or the other. No matter what, even if you make this 1.89%, someone would lose money here. So I just wanted to share that with you, why it's not just quite such an easy process to even up the progression between steps.
But it looks like, and it looks like though that what you're doing is you're working toward that because that, at least you've got everybody at the, well.
It will take years to fix.
Yeah, right. To adjust it.
Yes. And there's just no way we can afford something like this, the 2.3 billion. So if you have no other questions, I would like to pass on the bulk of our budget to Mr. Whitaker with our compensation package.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Good evening, President Fitch, board members, and Dr. Treheal. It's my pleasure in being able to present to you this evening the compensation plan for the 2122 school year. So as we go through the compensation plan, on page four, you will see the updated general staffing information. And you also have the documents within your board book. So that's page four, updated information on the staff breakdown. Page five reflects the compensation recommendations for the substitutes. Page seven has the updated information with the updated numbers for the teachers, librarian, nurses on the teacher scale. Page nine reflects the new updated numbers for the counselors for the 2122 school year. Page 11, as we move into our athletic stipends, last time we talked, again, assistant coach of an addition of $3,000. And Coach Pachid, I know last time you asked me a question about the golf students, golf students being able to get there to the golf course. And so as it sits right now, those students who are, have a license and are able to drive, they do drive themselves down to practice at the golf course. And students who may be underage or they may not have a vehicle, their parents take them to the golf course. And so that's speaking with Coach Alman, Director Athletics. And so we know we have the addition of the new Dragon Express, of the miniature Dragon Express and some other things. And so putting that on his mind, he is looking at some other alternatives and looking at some new ways of possibly looking how to get those students, making sure those students get to the golf course, taking them every day to Ashbro.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. As you see on page 12, that gives us our UIL campus stipend. And so we did make some changes there. Page 13.
Mr. Whitaker, before you leave that page, let's give the board a little bit of time to look at that UIL campus stipends and see questions with that page. We did make adjustments there based on some conversations we had on the last time we were here. One of the items was the difference between the National Honor Society. And the question was, you know, the difference between that and the high school. So you'll notice that we kind of standardized that to a, to a incomparable. And Ms. Whitaker, if you may, you've also done a little bit of a study in our neighboring districts to see if we're within the packages, correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir. We're looking at market data and looking at neighboring districts and doing some research. These numbers are comparable. It seems to grow and look at even increasing the numbers in the future, but yes, but these are comparable to where we are in our neighboring district.
That's great. And you'll take a look at this. There's a reason why we're being recognized at the state level with their TNA and all of our music awards that we're having. And so we're recognizing our teachers and the tremendous efforts that they're doing with our programming with our kids. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I just want to make sure I have time to take a look at that page.
Sure thing. Yes, sir. So as we move on to page 13, so you will see some notable changes here at the top of knowing that we took off the CTE education heading and stipends on this page. And you will see that going into the next section here in just a moment. So we retitle this academic and professional stipends. I think this better fits the tone to what these stipends represent. And again, I broke out the police officer stipends to NISB, police officers who receive those stipends for the certification, to break them out to better, have a better layout of the compensation plan on this page. And then on page 14, that's where you will see kind of a updated insert for our CTE stipends. And again, those are just laid out by the different sponsorship for those different programs and organizations that are being offered at middle school level and at the high school level.
Mr. Whitaker is, Mr. Lutz on here with us?
I did. So Mr. Lutz was able to join us. And so at this time, I will let him take it for work to kind of better explain the historical timeline of the stipends and to answer any questions that one may have as we look at these revisions. So, Mr. Lutz?
Sure. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak to you all this evening. You see, Mr. Whitaker, he did a great job. He's just going in order on the comp plan. And we're going to jump across to some pages in the back. So we're going to do a little bit of jumping around. There's going to be three different pages of the comp plan that you're going to look at. The first one is page 14, which is the 2122 proposed stipends for CTE. And then if you also look at page 17 of the comp plan near the back, that's Appendix A. We will reference that in a moment. That will give us a historical outlook of the previous year's stipends. And then Appendix B is the very last page of the comp plan. So those are the three pages we're going to look at. So I've had a couple of conversations with Dr. Treheal and Dr. Hill and Mr. Whitaker. And you know, we're at a time right now where we are re-envisioning what career and technical education looks like in Nacogdoches. And if you've been following, you know, from the state level, this has been happening, you know, every two years, for the past 10 years. And it's also the same at the federal level. So we're really looking at how we can re-envision what we're doing as far as compensation stipends and programming and certification offerings. And so the piece to the puzzle today is going to be the comp plan for stipends. So we're starting with, and you're on page 14 right now of the comp plan, but we're going to go ahead and switch to Appendix A, if you will, with me. That is again page 27 of the comp plan.
Mr. Lutz, do you have the ability to share your screen?
Yes.
Let's do that as well because that would help guide the board. Even though I love your background.
Yes.
Design your feature.
It's pretty neat. It's pretty neat. Yes.
Don't you say, "Man," I don't know, see it as well, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Can you all see this? Is this the right screen?
Yes, might make it bigger for the, for, just because I don't want to say anything else.
I have it on full screen.
Okay.
Ms. Morris, or is there something on here?
If you go over there to on the left and change that 100% to, yeah, zoom in maybe 150.
Ah, okay, okay.
Much better. Thank you.
That much better. Perfect. Okay. So this is the insert, this page right here is the insert of the, in the comp plan on page 14. Appendix A again is, I forgot what it was, page 27. So this is what we're looking at right now. This is a multi-page document. This process, this proposal began in early January, late December when I started looking at how funds are spent currently and in the past for stipends. And so you'll see this first table, this is what we're going to reference specifically. You'll see quite a few stipends that haven't been assigned to employees in the past. And whenever we look at that, you have about $28,000 of funds that could be redistributed, redirected towards other smaller stipends. And so what we found is that since this is board-approved stipends, we were really locked into that amount. So there was really not a whole lot of flexibility as far as providing smaller stipends for similar purposes. For instance, for health occupation or for auto mechanics, we were really locked in there. And then we also have one stipend, for instance, the work-based learning, that the purpose it was intended for, work-based learning doesn't look the same that it has in the past several years. So we've also looked at redirecting those funds towards another stipend. So this is to give you an idea of how it's looked in the past and the idea that we're utilizing, you know, trying to utilize every single dollar that we can and to repurpose those funds for other stipends and other initiatives. So are there any questions on Appendix A?
This document, this is just looking at the history and you'll see how we're, what the future will take us now.
And again, this is a multi-page document, you know, it's, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, okay. This is a multi-page document. So although this isn't stipends per se, we're looking at providing extra duty pay for CTE teachers through the summer months, starting in July. Because most of the time, these teachers are singletons, meaning they are the only person that teaches the subject that they're assigned to. And oftentimes, they are teaching multiple courses. And so this summer, you know, they'll have an opportunity to come in and work on curriculum, work on the learning new equipment, taking inventory, meeting with business professionals and setting up times to set up guest speakers, things of that sort. So that's not part of the stipend plan, but just for reference for what the rest of the document entails. If there's no other questions, I'll jump back to the compensation plan insert. This is again a page 14 of the comp plan. Give you just a moment to switch over. And so one note that I want to leave with you all is that we're going to honor existing stipends for employees that are returning. That's something that we felt was very important. I feel is important. So in other words, they'll be grandfathered in. So you'll notice the first five stipends listed right here are existing ones. I will remove that highlight, but I'll remove that highlight, but we are bringing these back next year. We have some additional stipends that that was made possible because we redistributed that twenty eight thousand dollars of funds to support our career in technical student organizations, C T S Os. You can think of this similar to U I L academics. There's a different portion, though. It's a great way for us and for students to continue their education outside of the classroom, outside of the C T E classroom. So they're furthering their technical, academic and employability skills. They have opportunities to compete at the local, state, and national level. They get to interact and meet business professionals. There's job shadowing opportu- opportunities, things of that sort. And then there's also a large push for leadership development and service learning, community service projects. So what we want to do, and this work is already being done and relatively successful, as we heard just last month, our Skills USA organization is sending students to the national competition. So the C T S O stipend in sorts is available for sponsors of these organizations who put in countless hours. We're going to switch gears again real quick to appendix B. That's the last page.
This particular page, when you talk about areas that are highlighted in green, the addition.
Yes.
Are individuals that are sponsors that, for the most part, not in every situation, but for the most part, have not been receiving any stipend. They have been providing the work, meeting with the students, and what we're doing is recognizing that they are providing a valuable service to the C T program, correct?
Absolutely. That is one hundred percent correct.
And even though they see the range of five hundred to fifteen hundred, you'll you'll dive in a little bit as to what does that mean?
Absolutely, yes. So if you'll flip over to the last page, appendix B, and that is a one-page document. This is in draft form, but we really want to support these teachers and support these student leaders to be the best that they can be and to represent our school district and our school and our C T E program. So there's some criteria here, and so when we say five hundred to fifteen hundred, we're really looking at a tiered stipend system. So based off of meeting the established criteria, let me enlarge this. I did not enlarge this. Let me go back to one fifty. So you'll see here that we have a bronze level, a silver level, and a gold level. And as teachers, as the sponsors, as the organizations complete and meet certain criteria, the sponsor will be able to receive the next tier, the next level of the C T S O stipend. So this is consistent criteria for all of our C T S Os. It's designed again to support the development and the improvement of our student organizations and those co-curricular opportunities. And it encourages the sponsors to to push the envelope, continue to be innovative, provide meaningful relevant opportunities for the kids to engage in their C T curriculum outside of the school deck. Are there any questions for appendix B that we've, since we've just reviewed this?
This is Mindy. I I don't have a question. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the work that you've done to come up with a plan to get our kids where they need to be. Not every kid is going to college. But you're providing an opportunity for a lot of kids to have a future. And I saw that in our last meeting with our cosmetology recognition, and my gosh, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity for so many children. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Winslow. This is, we have a talented team of teachers dedicated, and in about half of them, if I had to guess right now, I don't have the rough math, but many of these teachers left their industries to enter the classroom. So it's all through their hard work. So thank you so much.
Yes.
Okay, going back to page fourteen in the comp plan, and this is the last time we'll switch pages, I promise. So each of the C T S O sponsor items, each row, you'll you'll see some of the student organizations that are currently listed, DECA for business, H O S A for health science, the Student Response Team, which is our law enforcement team, Skills USA, Cosmetology and Culinary, Automotive, the Technology Student Association, the Family Career, the Family and Career Leaders of America, that's for our Family Consumer Science Program. And then in anticipated addition of the National Technical Honor Society, and that's an option that that's available to us that I see us pursuing next school year. We also have an item for a middle school C T S O program. We currently have middle school C T E classes at both middle schools. And so there's definitely an opportunity to have a middle school chapter for the Technology Student Association or even Skills USA and get those students engaged earlier, which we think would be a great recruitment tool as they move into high school. So the second area that when we're looking at new stipends, there is a secondary C T E robotics coordinator stipend. We are we have built a plan to to establish a robotics program for the district, and we're starting with high school and in middle school. That's going to be a heavy emphasis. And this individual, and just a side note, I'm so excited for the future of that program. Specifically, when you're talking about coding and programming and just those I T components that are introduced in robotics, and when you think of artificial intelligence and how that's changing the game in nearly every industry. This is going to be a great gateway to get those students trained and to learn that whole process when it comes to coding and programming. But anyway, so this individual will work side by side with the middle school robotics individuals, the robotic sponsors. Will help coordinate the inventory, the new inventory, the new equipment that we're ordering and build a local robotics competition for the secondary level. So this individual is going to have a whole lot of work to do, but the person that that we have up here at the high school is going to do a flawless job. And then the last new stipend cluster is the C T E incentive, critical higher stipend. A perfect example with this. As I mentioned, we have some teachers that left industry. If in the future we were to begin an HVAC program and have our students leave Nacogdoches High School certified as an HVAC technician. I I think all of us in the room probably understand that HVAC technicians make 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 a very good, healthy salary. And so we need to have some stipends set aside to incentivize some of those critical higher positions where those industry folks are doing very well in industry when you talk salary. So there's two levels. They can be offered independently or combined to offset that salary adjustment to incentivize them to join our district and enter the classroom.
The, let me mention on this one here, this is important for us to kind of pause for a second. We we've got to be very, I want the board to be very informed when we're doing an incentive for you to be aware that it's a two, two-level stipends. We don't come up with an arbitrary number of ten thousand dollars for one, thirteen thousand for this one, and twenty seven hundred dollars for this other. It will follow this model. This is the model that we would have. So when he says we can combine this, you can literally find a person and you're saying, okay, this person here, I could get them, we would have to offer them an opportunity with a level one and a level two. So they have an opportunity to make seventy five hundred dollars, where you might find another person in the industry that would be a full-fledged master electrician. And when and if we expand to provide that as a C T opportunity, then we may need to go in there and say, you know what, this individual, we're going to provide two level two incentive, critical higher stipends. This way, you as a board and can see where and how we're packaging this up. Why are we providing two level two, rather than saying, why didn't we offer this person thirteen thousand dollars? And we we can't compete by just rolling the dice and fighting with numbers to match them with what they're doing. We've got to find the system that works for the school district and be able to point it back to a line item to say this is how we arrived to that number. And that was very important in the conversation that Ms. Lust and I were having is, what does that look like? And so when you saw it last time as a strikeout, we wanted to make sure they're articulate that this is the direction we're wanting to make sure that we get, especially in our C T program.
Any other questions that I can answer for the board?
Mr. Lust? This is Coach Newerman. I want to thank the district to offer those meaningful programs, and I also want to thank you and your staff to head in a direct direction and maintain the course.
Thank you, Coach. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll turn it back to Mr. Whitaker.
So that wraps up page fourteen, and so as we get into page fifteen, we now dive back into again to the top book, compensation plans on page fifteen, we start moving into the administrative and professional employee section. And there you can really see the updated numbers that we increased to. Again, note that change of the team's coordinator there, who will turn into a director position as we discussed last time. And then the additional pay grade nine on page seventeen. As we continue to move on, on page nineteen, that begins the clerical instructional aid employees. And again, you will notice the new changes of the new numbers reflected for this section of pay grades. On page twenty two, this goes into our hourly manual trade employees. As we discuss a little bit of changes, as you may know from last time, that we went back in to clean up some of the sections and kind of re-revamp what we've done last time. And so last time, we talked about the introduction of some additional pay grades, but we went back and revised this section to just kind of increase our starting pay grade one, that hourly wage, so again, to better attract and retain some of our entry-level grounds and maintenance workers, as well as for pool service workers, as that's been an issue in the past, as well as our transportation bus aid personnel. And again, cleaning up some of the language and terminology of some of our positions, trying to streamline those and bring those up to date. And again, moving some of those in accordance with with market data, moving them accordingly to what they should make. And then again, the new changes of numbers for those pay grades. And then lastly, you will find on page twenty six, the technical support for our technology group. Again, just obey some of those terminology, in addition, adding terminology and the new numbers to reflect the pay grades and the numbers for those positions. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate you all.
Right, Mrs. Barbara, do you have anything else on your report, ma'am?
I do not. That concludes our board workshop.
All right. Thank you so much.
You so much.
With that, that will take us to our final item on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. We've got a motion. Do we have a second? All right, a motion by Mrs. Winslow, a second if I remember. All those in favor, please, in the capes, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. As a closing note, I will remind you, board members, that our next meeting will be agenda workshop, and we will be meeting at the N X in the border.
Thank you. Thank you.